I'll bring something to that meeting if it's passing.
You're overbuds, you guys.
I send the same thing.
You're done.
I can post some rumor on Facebook. See if we can get a turnout. Of course.
Call the order this meeting of the Escanaba City Council, December nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Ms. Weiser, please call roll.
Councilmember Moore, here. Councilmember Boshaw?
Here.
Councilmember Dubard? Councilmember Flah?
Here.
Mayor Yama?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion, excuse Mr. Dubard.
So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time seeking approval and/or corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting of December fifth, twenty twenty four.
Move approval.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This time seeking approval and/or adjustments to the current agenda as written. Support. Seeking a second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time, is there any conflict of interest pertaining to items on the agenda need to be declared by members of council?
With regard to item one, I'll defer to council if they consider it a conflict of interest. But I should disclose that I believe a building that my wife and I own may fall under the grounding and bonding issue of number one.
Thank you. Noted. This time, we will hear a brief public comment. If you wish to make a comment, please approach the podium, state your name, place of residence, keep your comments. I'm sorry. Pertaining to items on the agenda, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. We currently have no public hearing scheduled. We have no unfinished business on the docket. Moving on to new business, item number one, approval, grounding and bonding of water service lines. Water.
Administration is requesting city council approval to retain the services of Master Electric of Escanaba, Michigan for the grounding and bonding of water service lines in an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Money is available within the current water department's fiscal year. So this was, this is related to services that have already been replaced. Historically, we've always reestablished grounding on the, what would be the galvanized or copper line, where we put plastic in, which we didn't use often, but it made sense in some circumstances. We just reestablished those grounds. But what is important is the water moving through the pipe, not it just being a metal pipe. Spent a lot of time talking amongst ourselves with electricians, Eagle, engineering, and Jeff has gone to, to different conferences. And we've really kind of broadened our reach to the state on the issue, like, is anybody else having the same issue? And it wasn't really on anybody's radar, which it now is, and they're going to talk at another conference about it. So it's something we feel we have to go back and do. We don't want there to be any danger in these homes, and certainly not being grounded does present a danger. The water services that we're actively doing under the grant work now, we are, you know, this would be something that would be covered in those grants. So this is more of a approval for work that's already been completed for circumstances that were unforeseen. Jeff, Lamp, you can elaborate on it more. In a nutshell, that's where we're at.
That pretty much sums it up, but what we've always done in the past was we would leave the ground connected to the existing galvanized service. And again, like Jim said, when that water is not in that pipe, it's a meaningless ground. So with the plastic, it has to go through a fall, two grounding rod, grounding. And for the record, majority of these houses in Escanaba, very few of them are properly grounded. So we've always just reestablished what we find. However, when you go to plastic, you can't even do that. So it's just, it's chaos, and it seems like every time we dig deeper in the subjects, we learn more tricks and new issues, and it just makes the mitigation that much worse for us to go inside houses.
So I have a couple of questions, by me. Read, Jeff. How many lines do you think that need to be replaced or redone? And how long does it take to do these lines?
Right now, we have about forty-six to forty-seven plastic services. And with this request, I'm just allowing extra money for stuff that happens in the coming construction season, even though that would only be for stuff that we do on our own, because everything within the grants has already been addressed last winter, and the contractors are doing all of that said work appropriately for each grant paid project.
And how long does it take to re-ground these, I guess?
I'm not at all sure. I would guess probably about an hour for the contractor.
Does council mind if I speak on this subject?
Absolutely not. Please, please give inputs.
Jeff, you mentioned forty-six or forty-seven that you know of so far. How many more do you think you would run into in the next year or so? I assume this is carrying over into twenty-five?
Well, again, everything is gonna happen this year. With the ARPA one and ARPA two monies, it's already established to be paid for through the grant. The only time that we would come across is if a house that's not being done needs a plastic service, and wherever a plastic service is normally needed would be a long boulevard push, anything over or greater than a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five feet. We feel that there's not a proper hydraulics to provide enough water for that house. So I don't think a lot, but I think I budgeted enough for seventy to get us through the next construction season.
So forty-three thousand divided by seventy. I don't know. I don't do math very well anymore.
Should be the right math unless I made a mistake.
Six, seven hundred dollars apiece?
That's, that's what it is. I think it's six fifty a piece for full grounding, five fifty a piece for partial, and the five fifty seems deep, so we are not.
For an hour's worth of work?
Well, I can't dictate what contractors charge.
I know that, I know that, but...
There's, there's also the time scheduling, also a hundred dollar permit that they have to draw from the state. I, I, this was a bid project. We sent this request to every electrician in town. We only had one show up.
But in some cases, I do believe it'll take nothing more than three feet of copper wire, six gauge maybe, a couple clamps.
On, on the partial?
They'll be in and out with twenty dollars worth of material and fifteen minutes' worth of work.
On the partial services, you're one hundred percent correct. That's why I don't feel that's justified. But on the full grounding, you're going inside of an electrical panel, you're reestablishing the ground, you're pulling a permit, and you're doing the grounding rods. So that's work that we can't even do inside the city. Whereas the partial grounding with the jumper on the meter, that's stuff that we can do. So we're gonna do it, even though there's probably six hundred of those that we have to go back to with city staff and reestablish proper grounding throughout houses.
It's the, my opinion, the kind of thing where government, government contract, what have you, prices are what they are, especially when you only have one, one company willing to bid on the project. You gotta pay, I guess, what the, what the rate is.
And Jeff or Ron, you might know, at what point do you need a electrician to do the work for something like this? I mean, I assume some reestablishment isn't really...
There, there was, I'm guessing it's still the case that a homeowner is allowed to do the work themselves, which the thought crossed my mind, if you told the homeowner, we'll give you five hundred dollars, and you sign a waiver saying they're good, they're not gonna come after the city, is that an option?
I feel like that's a lower question. That might be a lower question. I don't think that's an option. I don't think we wanna get, I mean, I know what you're saying, Ron.
You might run into, you know, other homeowners down the road then that run into, you know, issues from not being properly grounded and, you know...
But if they took the city's money and signed a waiver...
I, I, I would...
I know you wouldn't.
...process because...
I'm not recommending that path, but it was the first thing that came to my mind, that it can be done for much, much less, I believe, in most cases.
I wholeheartedly agree with you. I was a little taken aback at these costs as well, but we went through the bidding process and I'm, or the process, and this is what we're left with.
What happens if you don't do it?
Well, what happens if a house burns down? We have had a recent issue on the north side here, where the contractor took and removed a ground from a water service, and they were in the process of moving it to the new copper line. And during that time, there was a bad neutral or something off the, off the power. The ground went hot on the gas service grounding. The, the gas service was, the ground was against the gas service itself, burned, burned the gas line completely off. Within minutes, had a gas leak. They called the gas company, shut everybody down. And when we found out what the problem, we called an electrician and came in, and we mitigated the neutral problem. It was a homeowner's problem, but it happened during our construction project. We've had other issues where we're getting sparks and jumps across meters. Very often, we have houses that are not properly grounded, and every time we're going in there, we're taking a risk and putting the city at liability. This is my way of mitigating it the best we can.
Do you want to create a line item for this in the budget and watch it?
No, I'm...
More is fascination?
No, I realize there are, you know, instances where people have other issues and this grounding, bonding is actually helping them. They're not aware of the other issues that they have, something shorted out and...
I think that's been proven, that people are unaware of the problem until something else happens to their house, and then it becomes, they realize, well, my neutral's not right, or this isn't right, and then there's a problem.
All right, seeking a motion for approval. I'll move to approve.
Support.
Further discussion on the item. Ms. Weiser, please call roll.
Mayor Yama?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Flah?
Yes.
Thank you for your diligence and your accidental innovation and pathfinding for the rest of the state. Next time, can you find a coupon book? New business, item number two, approval, wastewater treatment plant, sodium hypochlorite transition equipment, wastewater.
Administration is requesting city council approval to purchase equipment needed with regard to the city of Escanaba wastewater plant, sodium hypochlorate transition from gas to liquid in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. Money is available within the current wastewater department's fiscal year. So this is what we talked about, getting basis of design work done for. That's moved quickly. It's a draft. It's been run by Eagle. They have given kind of a soft approval if we decide to move forward with equipment. A bit of a tight timeline on this, because we don't want to buy more of the gas chlorine in February here, so we're presenting it today already, even though our basis of design isn't one hundred percent complete, just to get the ball rolling, not have to incur costs with the gas chlorine. And we also fear too, if we buy more gas chlorine, are we furthering any violations that we may have? Something we, again, we talked about it before, we have to do. It's like paying to change your tires, you don't wanna do it, but something you have to do. But something too, in the conversations with Eagle, they advise, pretty much everybody in the state has had to do this, and everybody that hasn't is going to have to pretty soon. So we're not the only ones in this boat either. And I would add too, this agenda item was put together shortly before the agenda had to be posted, and we talked about the memo that went out, and there's really no contingency in here. And with this being kind of an incomplete basis of design, still still being a draft, I think there's a chance, like a ten percent contingency probably makes a lot of sense here. That's what I would prefer, even if we make Jeff come back to me to release the contingency. But just, I think it's something that, I don't wanna get into this conversion, be partway through it, and then we're coming back for five thousand dollars for one last part, and it stops the project, so. I would add ten percent contingency in the request. Jeff can talk about it if that makes sense, but when we initially talked, something that made sense at the time, at least.
If I understand you correctly, so ten percent of the total project cost or of the seventy thousand?
Of the seventy. So just be an additional seven thousand for...
Yeah, that would cover it, if we're concerned about...
Perhaps, perhaps not.
Just ten, ten percent sounds like a lot on large-scale projects, but on seventy thousand, is that gonna...
We've had a lot of eleventh-hour, may I speak?
Please do.
We've had a lot of eleventh-hour planning just today. We've gotten some costs back from the contractor that we're working with, the vendor. Our plans have shifted greatly from totes to storage tanks. We may be closer to forty-three thousand dollars in, in, in equipment. A good portion of that would be used for the temporary system. Some of that garage doors may have shifted to a two-by-six framed-in-wall. We're gonna be really close at seventy, but I think we might be closer to eighty, depending on how things go. We're gonna do this as frugal as possible, but I think that we're gonna be really, really tight at seventy thousand.
Are you working me up a new number?
Yeah, that's, that's more than ten percent if you're talking...
Yeah. Fifteen percent would be eighty thousand, five hundred.
So if we give them twenty percent just to cover, at your discretion, with manager approval, so that you don't get partway through, and we have to have an emergency meeting to pass another twenty grand? That seems practical to me. I mean, I know we just said you can't do any more shopping, but if it just carries some celery, it's okay.
I've got a question. In your memo, you talk about staffing and the allocation of time. That is, if you continue with the gas system, correct?
Correct. If we continue with the gas system, we need a process safety management, which is a very costly and time-intensive ordeal. Everyone that we speak to, a city of our size, it would take one person fifty percent of their full-time resources to procure that, including a team of three or four people, that would require two or three weeks of their time each year. On top of that, there's so many requirements with PSM. One such that sticks out is any gas, any line that has gas chlorine in it would have to be x-rayed for its integrity every five years. I have no idea what that cost is, but there's just so much with PSM. We've heard enough to run scared and go with the safer, easier chemical to use.
This process puts us in the path for compliance to avoid fines, is that correct?
Yes. Correct. Right now...
Whereas if we were to do this other, if I may speak just a moment, if we were to, because the other route sounds like, well, maybe there's deferred costs, and we could space it out a little bit, and it might seem like a softer landing, but that would be in addition to fines on top of that, which is money we don't wanna wanna spend, whereas if we do this now, we're stepping towards a system we're gonna be forced into in the future anyways, correct?
Correct.
So we're gonna be doing something we need to, we're just avoiding fines.
We absolutely have to either have PSM and go through the costs and pains of doing that, or we risk the quarter million dollars in fines from my OSHA for each plant, which we would have had we not reached out for my OSHA for their help and training in July. They gave us a pass when we asked for that, to come in and say, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong? When they learned of that, they very politely backed away. They said, fix your system, if you don't, we'll be back. But we would have had two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars violations at the wastewater plant, two-fifty-six at the, at the water plant, and still be forced to spend the money to either
To do either of these processes.
Or change chemicals.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase at seventy thousand and give the manager discretion of an additional fifteen thousand if necessary.
Support.
Further discussion on this item? Ms. Weiser, please call roll.
Councilmember Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Flah?
Yes.
Mayor Yama?
Yes.
Thank you.
New business, item number three, first reading of ordinance number one-three-zero-two, Light Manufacturing Zoning District Ordinance of twenty twenty-four, and setting the date of Thursday, January second, twenty twenty-five, for the second reading, public hearing, and adoption, planning and zoning.
Administration is requesting city council to consider this the first reading of ordinance number one-three-zero-two, Light Manufacturing Zoning District Ordinance of twenty twenty-four. Administration is requesting that city council set January second, twenty twenty-five, for the second reading, public hearing, and adoption of ordinance number one-three-zero-two. So this did come from the Planning Commission. It was unanimous in its vote, I believe. Couple different things being accomplished. One, it, you know, maybe most importantly, it is good zoning practice. It's consistent with the master plan. It's not, you know, malpractice of zoning, but we are achieving a couple of things. It all started with one property on North Thirtieth and just north of Ninth Avenue, which is in the G, heavy manufacturing. They're looking at a car wash and potential other uses in the future. They needed to change to either E or F to accomplish what they wanted to do. It would perhaps be a little problematic to rezone one small area. So they're looking at, do we add a use, do we, do we change it to E? So we've been, it's just, it's come upon us pretty quickly in the last couple of weeks of a potential development between Sixth Avenue and Ninth Avenue. And looking at the proposed use, it very clearly fits into F. And certainly would be a use that, you know, we believe would create quite a few jobs. We feel it could be north of a hundred jobs altogether. So we are in the running for that site, as long as all the other approvals come along. There would be a site plan approval down the road, and I believe there will be some wetlands to contend with and necessary Eagle approvals in that area. But certainly, we have the infrastructure there. They've enjoyed working with Escanaba. I feel pretty confident that with this rezoning, we will be a very likely location of some development. And I believe this moving through would show a pretty good sign that they will continue to put money into the due diligence process, go through with any delineation, further engineering, because they do wanna get going next year potentially, so. I encourage you to show them a vote of confidence and set the second reading. They're aware this is being talked about, and I'll be giving them an update after the meeting for sure.
So I move approval for the second reading for the public hearing and adoption.
Support. Discussion. Ms. Weiser, please call roll.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Flah?
Yes.
Councilmember Boshaw?
Yes.
Mayor Yama?
Yes.
We got two appointments. We have appointed by manager with council approval. These individuals' third terms will expire January first of twenty twenty-five, and they both wish to be reappointed to their fourth terms on the Electrical Advisory Committee. And there is currently still one vacancy in addition to this open. Glennon Brown and Tim Wilson. Council approves. Please make those appointments. And since I already wrecked that surprise, the only other surprises we have are Board of Equalization Review. There's one vacancy, and there's also a chance to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals, the two alternate vacancies. Busy with Christmas shopping right now, so maybe in January. Board Commission Committee reports. I have none.
The Historical Commission met. Mostly, we talked about the grant opportunity for seminars to educate the commission plus the public on the possibility of the historical district. We have not heard about that grant yet. And then we filled out a form, if you will, from SHIPOL that is basically asking questions about our goals and opportunities as, as a historical commission, what we have done and our goals in the future. So we spent the majority of the meeting on that. We still have, looking for members for the study committee for the historical district. We had one application. I think there's two appointees from the Historical Society too, but we need, need a couple more. So I implore people, if they're interested in historical preservation, to please join the committee. Once again, it's just a study committee that's, that's commissioned to, for a year or two to discuss if a historical district is wanted by the citizens of Escanaba in that area or not, or if they would like some alternative. And it's basically a discussion and open hearing.
Mr. Boshaw.
The Planning Commission met last week. They held a public hearing on the special land use permit for the old Super One building, the gas station that's going in there. There was also another hearing for the zoning map amendment regarding the property that we're discussing there on item three, thirty, North Thirtieth Street, and the change in zoning. They also did the site plan review for the gas station, and that was also approved.
Busy meeting. Very good. I have none, other than, you know, the DDA had their... organizational meeting as far as officers. I believe Sue Parker is continuing on as president, and Kelly Van Goghman is vice president of that group. Yeah, and I don't know any details of the meeting. Was there anything poignant?
They discussed events, a little bit of event planning for the next year and kind of prefaced some budget talk. Do they want to continue spending on advertising and events or focus on some other things?
We did just get a very nice presentation from Mr. Orville last meeting, so. This time we will hear general public comment. If you wish to make a comment, please approach the podium, state your name, place of residence. Announcements. The city did have a little gathering to honor Pat Vitante for her forty-ish, forty-one years of service, as the children's librarian that was very well attended and by young and old. So that was very nice, and it's nice that we do that, and it's nice that we have people that have served our community for so long like that. Just another reminder of how nice it is to live here, so. The other announcement I have is that Santa Claus is indeed coming to town, so please don't be naughty, be nice. Seeking a motion to adjourn.
So move.